Good morning and welcome to the February 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners Agenda. And I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Bill Payton for the invocation.
Power heads please. Dear Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everybody's looked through the minutes? Could have a motion for approval of minutes?
So moved.
Motion made, approval, any discussion? If not, all approved, please signify, raise your right hand. Mr. Honeycutt, anything to discuss in just agenda?
Yes, sir, we do. We do have one budget amendment we would like to walk on from the Sheriff's Department. And we're waiting on Christie to bring that out, so.
Any board member?
No, sir.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? So Mr. Bill, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, Mr. Honeycutt, this special presentation, the employee service pins.
We do. And Carol has our list and we'd like to have Carol run today, but would like to ask those that are receiving their pins, if you'll kind of come through here and then we'll get picture of the empowered board at the conclusion of all.
Thank you.
All right, we will begin with our one-year pins, beginning with Jensen Convergia with jail. All right, Mr. Joel Gilli, Public Affairs.
Already a year.
Cortina Hamilton, DSS Regular Services. Frankie J. Lettroy, Health and Environmental. Erin Miller, Non-Emergency Transport. Caitlin Allen, Information Technology. Amy Carsten, Maxwell Center. Brandon Elrod, School Resource Officer. Emile Gayton, Maxwell Center. Morgan Heath, Emergency Services. Jeffrey Carney, Sheriff's Office. Cameron O'Quinn, Jail. Charles Oliver Jr., Jail. Christine Pittman, Services on Aging. Don Willis, Goals for Wayne Transportation Authority. And that's the end of our one-year service pins. We'll now move on to our five-year. All right, beginning with Joshua Davis, School Resource Officer. Deborah Ellis, DSS Regular Services. Lee Holt, Sheriff Larry Ian Pierce. Annie Smith, Board of Elections. And Ashley Tillman, Health and Environmental. And then we'll move on to our ten-year. Water Blount from the jail. Tiffany Creach, Wayne County Development. Julie Smith, Animal Control. And Eric S. Pierce, Wayne County Sheriff's Office. That's it for our ten-year. For our 15-year service pins, we have Robin McColl Stein with Wayne County Sheriff's And Patrick Tuck with Sheriff's Office. Our 20-year pin recipient is Cassandra Fisher with Wayne County Jail. Our 30-year recipient, Deborah McCullough Williams with DSS Administration.
She might want to go home.
And last but certainly not least, our 35-year pin is Judy Binning Harrison, Resident All right, you'll kind of, some might have to stand in front, so if you're a little shorter stature.
That ruled you out, didn't it?
Mr. Chairman, if there's anything you'd like to say?
Yeah. To all of you, thank you for your service and for your one-year service pin recipients, you'll look around and just a blink of eye, you'll be like Ms. Judy Harrison and have you here 35. But it will go by quickly. Thank you for your service. Any other board member have a comment?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Honeycutt, would you like to introduce our next presenter?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Sherry Archibald, behalf of Paramount Theater and also newly appointed Director of the United Way.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning Chairman and County Commissioners. I am Sherry Archibald with the Paramount Theater and joining me is Latoya Henry, who is the Public Information Officer with the City of Goldsboro. We wanted to personally give you an invitation to an exciting event that we have coming up. And I believe you have some information on it, but I am going to leave you this personal invitation so you have it to reflect back to. But on March the 5th at 2:30 at Goldsboro High School, we are going to have a wonderful production, brief, only 30 minutes, but a production with Mike Wiley, who is an actor and playwright in North Carolina. He's written 11 different plays on Black history. He's performed at the theater numerous times and he's very engaging, a wonderful performer. And so we're excited about bringing him. And what I'm really excited about is the collaboration that's going to form. We want to make sure that we have a lot of community leaders there with our students to see this production.
Okay. And all of this is made possible by a collaboration between the city's Community Relations Department, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, Wayne County Public Schools, and the Paramount Theater Foundation, all giving money, donating money to make sure that we were able to offer this to the children with no cost. And it's really a good example of what we can accomplish when we have those type of public and private partnerships.
Thank you, Latoya. Yes, so just to kind of give you a little history, we do at the Paramount have an outreach committee that comes together a couple of times a year to help determine what kind of performances we're going to bring and to help us reach out to the community to share what kind of performances we're bringing. And in our meeting last fall, we discussed this prospect and it rolled into this collaboration through many different meetings. I've had the opportunity to meet with our city council, the school superintendent, many community leaders. I wanted to talk to them face to face in addition to them receiving this invitation by email. So I wanted to be able to do that for you gentlemen as well today. Just so that you know, there will be all sixth grade students in Wayne County Public Schools will be able to come to the theater to experience a performance as well. It will take three shows to be able to reach all of them, but they will come on, two shows on Monday, March the 4th, and one show on Tuesday, March the 5th. And then in the afternoon is the performance that I'm really reaching out to you. I'm hopeful that we'll have as many community leaders in that audience as we have students. It's my hope that we will all be sitting together, side by side with these students to see a great performance and to really just have some fellowship with these students. So again, you are invited. I will leave this with you and I hope to see you there on March the 5th. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have public comments times. You want to hear wish to speak before the board? Please give your name and address and phone number to the clerk.
My name is Jonathan Barnes. I'm here representing Bar New Luxury Transportation, which is located at 109 Windy Field Drive, Goldsboro, North Carolina, telephone number 919-247-7129. As I said, my name here, my name is Jonathan Barnes. I'm here representing Bar New Luxury Transportation. I'm here today to talk about business opportunity. I am the owner and operator of Bar New Luxury Transportation. And I want to talk about an issue I've had with being denied a business opportunity here in Goldsboro. We are a local business here in Wayne County. I am a minority business and a service disabled veteran business. Again, I want to emphasize opportunity in those characteristics as far as Wayne County's concerned and business opportunity. I had an issue with the Maxwell Center back last month when the Shriner's were in town. I was providing transportation service around about 6:30 PM from the hotels to the Maxwell Center. After my fifth, after my fifth trip, I received a phone call from Mr. James Wade, the director of the Maxwell Center. I'm also sent another phone call from an individual representing the Shriner's. I don't recall his name. Both individuals advised me not to come back to the Maxwell Center and provide any transportation because I was providing a paid transportation from the hotels to the Maxwell Center when the Shriner's had a free shuttle going from the Maxwell Center, from the hotels to the Maxwell Center. This is kind of shocked me, telling me not to come back. I ceased operations because I didn't want my reputation as a business being tarnished, but I did nothing wrong. So with that said, I'm here to talk about how we can, in the future, deter this and also how the Maxwell Center and other organizations here in the county could support local businesses. I don't feel, personally I don't, and I've talked to some other organizations here in the community, don't feel that Maxwell Center supports local businesses because they don't promote us. The only thing they promote is, from my understanding, is caterers. They have a list of caterers and, and I think the top caterer on the list is not even in Wayne County. He's in, he's in New Bern, which means, where does he buy his food from? Does he buy it in Wayne County? Where does he employ his employers from? Is it Wayne County? So what I'm saying here today is I'm here to maybe start a conversation of how we can help the Maxwell Center and other organizations to help promote local business and be the economic impact that it is, should be here in Wayne County.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. And Mr. Honeycutt will be getting in contact with you to discuss this deeper.
I will get in touch with you. We'll sit down, love to sit down and talk with you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, if you will take this sheet out there and at the stand and put your name and company and phone number so that he can have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, public comments time is closed. Consent agenda, we reviewed at 8:00. Oh, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Appointment Committee, Mr. Aco.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have one appointment today. Need to, we have an application for Mr. Ronald Waters to serve on the Goldsboro Planning Commission. And this comes from the Appointment Committee. That's in form of a motion.
Motion been made, any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now consent agenda. We reviewed at our 8:00 AM briefing with one additional budget amendment with Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion been made, any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. And now we move to new business, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you're aware, the Planning Department received petition to rename the community of Starlight in order for the NC DOT to place a sign, such name on the NC DOT county map and establish a community identification sign. The community name was established in 1894 at the intersection of Jordan's Chapel Road and Raynor Mill Road. After the community post office was closed in 1905, the community name gradually fell into disuse. And again, the DOT requires that we approve a resolution of support and we do have petitions and you have the map in your agenda packet. And if the board is okay, I'll be glad to read that resolution.
Please.
All right, thank you. Resolution to reestablish the community of Starlight as an intersection name in the county of Wayne. Whereas, a United States post office for the community of Starlight was established in 1894 at the intersection of South Jordan's Chapel Road and Raynor Mill Road and remained operation until 1905, whereas Wayne County NC soil survey maps continue to reflect the existence of the community in 1916. Whereas, the North Carolina Department of Transportation county maps currently do not reflect the name of the community of Starlight and thus, an identification sign does not exist at the intersection of said community. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners for the county of Wayne wishes to recognize and preserve the historic significance of this community and hereby wishes to reestablish the name of this community so that it can be reflected on the appropriate North Carolina Department of Transportation county maps and thus be identified by appropriate signage. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Wayne that the intersections of South Jordan's Chapel Road and Raynor Mill Road be hereby, be hereafter referred to as Starlight. So we have this as your recommendation.
Thank you.
And again, I want to thank Barry Gray and the Planning Department for research and work on this and, and we appreciate the community for the petition as well.
Is anyone from the community like to say something, Mr. King?
I don't know if I really have anything to say, other than I'm here to...
Come up to the microphone, please.
I don't know if I really have anything to add, other than I'm here to represent my brother and his wife, Dexter Keen, Debbie Keen. They live there at the crossroads that we're, we're talking about and they couldn't be here today, so they wanted me to just come to be representative. I did do, you know, a lot of the research, you know, on the, to kind of get this thing going. My brother was the driving force, but I did a lot of the library research to do it. So he just wanted to have somebody here today, so that's the reason I'm here today.
Good, thank you. I appreciate you being here. And as soon as it gets loaded, this meeting gets loaded on our website, make sure Christopher sees this part of it, if you will. I appreciate it.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Motion been made, any discussion?
I just, I think this is great. I've known Chris a long time. He's a special young man. He's, he's had a difficult life and I understand that he was instrumental in helping get this done. And I had a granddaughter that has the same thing that he has, you know, they're special, they're special people. You know, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And say hello to Christopher, if you will.
I will.
Okay, motion is made, any further discussion? If not, I ask for a vote. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, Catch a Glimpse.
This is Catch a Glimpse, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. This month, we honored the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. We also caught up with Jessica Strickland for our In the Garden Show, where we learned about North Carolina blueberries. Mackenzie Henson from the Make a Difference Food Pantry and Wayne County Fire Princess stopped by to talk about an anti-opioid event. We caught up with our county managers for a talk with the county manager, where we learned about everything going on in Wayne County. Senior Airman Candace Brown stopped by from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to talk about a day in the life of her job as a dental assistant. And representatives from the library stopped by to discuss their upcoming veterans writing And we produced videos to help the library introduce their new mascot to kids across Wayne County. We covered events with Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest, the Wayne County Employee Blood Drive, as well as the Board of Commissioners Annual Budget and Goals Planning Retreat. And now, an update from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Hello and welcome to this week's Video of the Week. This week, we're looking back at the Essentials of County Government courses held over the last two months. In conjunction with the School of Government at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, the NCACC sponsors the Essentials of County Government, an intensive two-day training seminar held throughout the state after every election cycle. The sessions are geared for both veteran and newly elected county commissioners. Entire boards are encouraged to attend. This two-day course provides newly elected county commissioners with the tools they need to transition from campaigning to governing. It covers the basics of the role of county governing and the powers and responsibilities of a county board of commissioners. Commissioners ask questions of and share information with their peers across the state and learn valuable lessons about resources available to them to help them navigate their new role. Each of the sessions includes the two hours of ethics training that all commissioners, both new and returning, are required to complete within 12 months of their election. Essentials of County Government also fulfills the orientation requirement for the local Elected Leaders Academy. This year's sessions were well attended, from the first, held in Wake County in mid-December, through the Buncombe County Course, and all the way through the last course that wrapped up in Pitt County just last week. We thank all commissioners, both newly elected and veteran who participated, and we look forward to a great 2019, working with all of you to help empower 100 counties to work together for the betterment of one state. Well, that's all we have for this week. If you have questions about anything you've seen here, please email communications@ncacc.org. Thank you for watching and we'll see you next week.
All right. Mr. Honeycutt, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a conversation with the chairman yesterday and the chair asked about, you know, an update of where we're at with open broadband. And I emailed Alan Fitzpatrick last night and he was able to give me a kind of a bulleted update where we are. So if you're okay, I'll be glad to read what he sent. Said, "Hi, Kirk, here are a few updates. We are working through the waitlist in the Seven Springs area, activating broadband service from the antennas on the water tower at the sewer district. Customers are very happy with their service, but we are getting more signups just as fast as we can get people installed, so the waitlist is not shrinking. The new 3.65 gigahertz radios have been installed in Seven Springs and on the Sutton Radio and TV Tower north of Mount Olive. There's an attached picture that we have from the Seven Springs Tower as well. This greatly expands our coverage and allows us to start serving those farther out from both communities. A new tower is also being quoted for the county EMS station on Indian Springs Road. Open broadband will be providing free internet to the facility in return for use of the tower. We continue to receive strong demand and have a waiting list for service. The reception to our service offering has been terrific. We are profitable and keeping up with the demand is our biggest challenge. We've extended an offer for another installer and we'll be sending in a crew from Waxall next week to turn up more residents faster. We're happy with all the support from Wayne County. The investment has been a good one and it feels good to have such a positive impact on people's lives. Thank you and your commissioners for your support. Let them know if they have any questions." So it sounds like things are going very well and moving forward.
Mr. May, you got a question?
Yes, I have a question. Is there any kind of schedule or anything of when we might get something in the northern part of the county? I know that it wasn't part of the original scope, but it was mentioned that we have areas up there that are dead spots, if you will?
Right.
Is there any, anything in the future that...
I know that that is on their radar and something they want to do. I think they're concentrating on the existing towers that they had access to, but, but northern Wayne is still a priority for them. So, but we can try to get that scheduled and see if they have a timeframe.
Mr. Chairman. Do we have to have a tower site up in the northern part? Do we have to have a, a tower site up in the northern part? Do they?
I, I think there, there may be some issues about, um, tower access in the northern, so, but, but, but we can get, you know, uh, you know, their, their pilot program was in the southern part of the county. So we, we can try to get it, see if they have a timeframe and, and that they want to do for the northern part.
Okay. Thanks for looking into it.
Yeah, I've talked into the balances up there because they were approached because they have the property that's perfect from that northern end of the county. However, the cost to, to the finances would have been $10,000. So, almost $10,000.
Cost for what?
To put up the tower.
Really?
Yes. And they will give them the land for free, but you know, you still got to have a tower. And that goes, that's my question I was going to ask council because I saw some things go recently through the General Assembly with some dollars that perhaps could provide infrastructure costs like a tower. Are you aware of that? Yeah, I'm trying to find a way to put this thing up there in the northern end of the county.
It, it is a priority of the county association. I think that's the number one priority for the county association in the legislative biennium, uh, is to push for that. So there should be some funds that, that are coming available, so we'll, we'll make sure we set up that.
Well, I'm sure that, you know, northern Wayne County is not unlike a lot of places in the state that, you know, you're not going to be able to go out there and have a landowner put up their own tower.
Yes, sir.
And actually, they said, well, they could put the tower up cheaper themselves. Unfortunately, something sold to big grain bins years ago, so that wouldn't, didn't work for them, but, you know, that's where, where they are.
I follow that. Is, is it necessary, Bill, as you and I saw down in New Orleans, is, is it necessary for this to be on a tower? Is there any other structures that's tall enough? There's nothing up there? Because I know I didn't admit...
If they had, sold their grain bins to the heavens years ago, they'd have had something there.
Well, you got a good point. Is, so there's no other grants or anything available for these tower sites, maybe, that, that we can get the tower built?
It's kind of the way I read it is they, they is, they would have to apply for it the way I read the stuff, you know, not the county.
Right, but there are, there is money in the General Assembly that they are trying to put and, and again, they are looking at that as a priority, uh, moving forward. So we'll, we'll make sure we set up top of that.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment, Mr. Chairman.
Is this something that the existing contractor could also have an input?
Probably so.
When they start looking up?
Yes, sir.
In other words, do they have any experience with going through?
Right.
The title, what I'm asking is, is that sooner or later, we're going to get to there and it would be nice to have a little bit of the groundwork done if we can.
And, and I, I think the, or, or open broadband does, you know, they're all across the state, so I'm sure that they've dealt with numerous issues and, um, height issues and side, or lot of side issues that they, they'll take care of. So, but we'll, we'll make sure that they're aware of what the General Assembly is doing as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right, we, I've had several calls from the Seven Springs area. The ones that are connected are well pleased. Well pleased, good.
That's all I have at this time.
Does any commissioner feel compelled to comment this morning? If not, we can go into closed session.
For the same reason.
For the same reason. Have a motion to go in closed session.
So do.
Question made. All in favor, please keep raising right hand.